Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
I'd like to call and order the meeting in Brookline Select Board for June 17th, 2020. Time is 6:30. On the phone or online are Joseph Dutton and Bruce Mello. Gwen Tanza is here in the office with myself. Shelby may be joining us shortly. First up is review changes to the agenda, if any. The only thing I want to note is Annie Guyan from the Humane Society will not be joining us, but Dot should be joining us once we get there. Gwen, are there any changes you want to make to the agenda?
No, definitely not.
Bruce, any changes you'd like to make to the agenda?
All set.
Okay. Joseph, any changes to the agenda? Okay. All right. Then moving right along, scheduled members of the public, as I said, Annie Guyan will not be joining us. Archie Clark is here in the office with us. Dot Maggio should be joining us in Zoom shortly.
Mark has just come in.
And Mark is just walking in as well. Unscheduled members of the public, whoever's got background noise.
Who's eating?
Oh, is it you?
He was unmuted.
Unscheduled members of the public, there are none. There's no one here in the office unscheduled, and there's no one online that was not scheduled. That brings us up to number five, approval of minutes from the June 3 meeting. I will note that on both pages, I just have a number of spelling corrections of like impacted down under the COVID-19 survey, counted under the summary reports, unlicensed under Guy's report, other plans, Nufane Chloride was misspelled under Mark's report, not being available. And then one more misspelling of aggressively on Other Business on the second page. Just those things, nothing substantive. Gwen, did you have any changes to the agenda?
No.
Bruce, were there any change, not the agenda, sorry, to the minutes. Bruce, were there any changes to the minutes other than the kinds of things I've noted?
No.
Okay. Joseph, how about you? Any changes to the minutes other than the spelling corrections I noted?
No.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from June 3 as amended. Is there a second?
A seconded.
Seconded by Gwen. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the June 3 meeting as amended signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Then the minutes are approved. We'll pause briefly just to note that, hi Shelby.
Hey.
There she is. This is America.
Shelby is with us, and Dot Maggio is also now with us. Hi, Dot.
Hi, Dot.
Dot's muted, but that's okay.
Okay.
I'll make sure she's unmuted when we get to the next.
There I am. Hi, guys, I'm here.
Hi, Dot. So for Shelby and Dot's benefit, having just joined us, Joseph and Shelby and Bruce are all on the phone or online along with Fact TV, who is streaming this like they're doing these days. In the office here are Gwen, Guy, myself, Archie, and Mark. Okay. So let's move on to the first item of new business, which is Six Papoose Lane situation. Let's start by, Dot, do you want to, do you want to give us just a brief recap of what has transpired with the dog situation in the last 10 days?
Sure. I had the assistance of the Vermont State Police, the local gang warden, a veterinarian, and two people from the Humane Society, Nancy Libby and myself, went last Saturday to Six Papoose Lane and impounded five dogs that were tied outdoors because they were not licensed, and I had gotten a text message that said he wasn't going to license the dogs. So based upon our ordinance, we were able to do that. We did it with a veterinarian so that nobody could complain that the dogs were returned in worse shape. Two of the dogs were released to the shelter, and Mr. Prue, the owner of the other three dogs, did, after about a week, concede to signing up with the collection agency to pay his outstanding municipal ticket debts and also pay the penalty and registration fees for the three dogs that he has. This bill is probably between $1,500 and $2,000, between that and the boarding costs. Or, this is, so this is something that, you know, we did legally, and I had, I was very pleased on how everybody worked together, and it was very, very smoothly. That's, that, those, so the three dogs that were, or the five dogs that were on the delinquent dog list, two of them got moved, will get moved to history. The other three dogs were licensed, and I can give you a report of the other dogs that are in town that are
They haven't been licensed yet.
If you want.
Hang on a second, Dot. So Guy is just weighing in that the Matt Prue's dogs have not actually been licensed?
No, I have not received any funds yet.
Oh, well, the funds would have, you were going to get check. There was an agreement that, that the Windham County Humane Society would take a credit card for the $201 owed for the three dogs.
Okay, but I just want to
Pay his board fee to get the dogs out on Saturday. That was the understanding, that they were going to be writing you a check, Guy, isn't that correct?
As of today, we have not received the check, and the dogs have not been licensed yet.
Well, the, the, well, you know what? That's news to me, because the dogs were not to be released until they paid the fee.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to interject that it sounds to me as though they, the fee was paid to Windham County Humane Society. They just have not forwarded the fee to us.
I believe that must be the case based upon the fact that he got his dogs back on Saturday afternoon.
They had no tags.
You can tell, I can tell you how I know, because I could hear him. He got the dogs back on Saturday. And they're supposed to go down south on Thursday, but for training, but that's neither here nor there. They wouldn't have been released. That was the agreement with Annie. They would not have been released had they not paid for the license fees.
Okay. So maybe, well, let's talk about this after Guy. Maybe we can, in betweens, we could reach out to the Humane Society just to find out where that money is.
I'll text her right away now, then I, I'll text her soon if we get off the phone.
Well, and so, right. And so I guess that just means then, Guy, correct me if I'm wrong, that, so, I mean, at this point, to this point, that we have, the dogs still aren't licensed. They don't have tags.
And we haven't issued that.
We haven't issued any of that yet, because we haven't
And maybe the check's in the mail, I don't know.
Right, okay.
But I will not license them until I get payment.
Right. Dot, let me just say thank you. I mean, a huge thanks to you and to Nancy and to Annie and the folks at the Humane Society and the Vermont State Police and Dave Taddy, the gang warden, and all of the people that were involved in doing this. It's unfortunate that it takes that many people to get somebody to hopefully eventually license their dogs, but thank you to you and all those people for helping make the best of that situation.
I'm going to, since I have you online, if you don't mind, I am going to run through the list of the delinquent dogs that we currently have and tell you where they sit. If that's, if that's five minutes, not even five minutes.
Sure, yeah, let's go ahead and do that, that's cool.
Okay. Dog number 92 on the delinquent list, the phone number is not at, does not work. I'll have to go over to the house. The next two dogs, dogs number 118 and 119 from last year's list. The owners will be calling Mr. Tanza tomorrow to get them registered. Dog number 83 on the delinquent list will also be calling tomorrow to get them registered. Dogs 125 and 126 could be moved to history because they were relinquished to the Humane Society. I put down on the list, dogs 5, 6, and 7, those were the dogs that were from Six Papoose Lane. I'll have to put a question mark, but I thought that the paperwork should be in the mail to Guy, and they get it tomorrow, but that was for those three dogs. And then dog 111, she'll be called. She'll call Mr. Tanza to tell him to move the dog to history as the dog had to be put down. And dog 107, I've dealt with this loose dog before. I left a voicemail message, and I told him in the voicemail that if the dogs are not licensed by June, in July, I write municipal taken, so they have to go to court. This is what I've been doing.
I follow.
Okay, here we go. All right. So I will check with Annie and email you later on, but I'm sure if the check is in the mail, you know, nonprofits have a little system where they issue checks and that sort of credit cards. I'm sure the dogs will not have to be released.
Yeah, okay. Dot, do you mind hanging on for a bit for further discussion about Six Papoose Lane in general? Because I think there's, I wanted to share that I believe in conversations with you and also with Annie, I was told, I mean, I have not spoken to Matt Prue, but I was told third-hand that multiple people had mentioned that his landlord was pressuring him to find a new place to live.
Yeah, that's not my, that's not my, my goal when I'm involved in, that's
Yeah.
Right. No, I'm just saying that, okay, but, I mean, were you not told that at any point in communication with him?
Yeah, Matt, Matt had said that he's looking for a place to move out of Brookline because his neighbors bother him.
Okay.
That's, that's a text message. I mean, I only communicate with him in writing now.
Sure.
But he mentions himself, he's looking to move out of Brookline because his neighbors harass him.
Okay. So I guess let's segue on then to the larger discussion of the residents. Joseph, I mean, I guess since you are the one who brought this up previously, has there been further, have you had further communication with residents or word of further issues in the last couple of weeks?
Nothing major that I've heard about. I do communicate with three of the residents that kind of live within earshot. And I think on, on Saturday, everyone noticed that the dogs got taken away, and there was no barking. And I think they were making, you know, making some noise that night, and then everyone noticed it was nice and quiet until the dogs came back, and now they hear the barking again, but nothing major has happened.
I did get a complaint last night about the dogs barking, and I actually timed it. It was 40, 45 minutes of barking. I could hear it at my house. So I texted the dog's owner, and he said that he was out lure training one of his dogs, but he would stop, and he didn't, and the dogs got quiet.
Okay. Well, that's positive. I mean,
Really?
Relatively speaking.
I think Yeah, I mean, at least there's communications that's a start.
Yeah.
And he's always pretty polite with me, but because sometimes he gets very hot-headed, I only do it in writing, but we have long text messages back and forth. You know, tomorrow, tomorrow will tell whether the dogs need town. I don't know. He said that they were going to go down south to be retrained in bear hunting, and, yeah.
I know, speaking about the issue overall, probably the part that concerns me the most is the firearms use, and I know that's something that's quite intimidating to at least four of the households that I've communicated with. And what concerns me, not just the noise and the intimidation factor, is the very real safety concern. I've heard that they, they kind of shoot every which way. They were like, at one point, a resident saw them standing on their porch and shooting at the pond, which would have a very real possibility of sending ricochets directly out the road. And, and they, a couple of residents think that they were shooting towards their house, sort of, and they heard what they thought was ricochets. And just from my interactions with these, with these people, I don't think that they are well-trained in firearms use, and there is a real danger, especially if they're shooting towards the road. That, that's a severely dangerous thing.
Yeah.
Has anyone reported this to the state police?
Again, with all these issues that we've spoken about in the last several weeks, I don't believe anyone called the state police during one of the events.
Has anyone called after the, I mean, have you called the state police after they described it to you?
Yeah, I, like I said, I kind of had a conversation with Lieutenant French, but nothing during or directly after an event, more, you know, in overview. And so, and again, the positive is that in the last two weeks or so, nothing, nothing that severe has happened. So that is positive.
That is positive, yeah.
Well, I will, I'll interject here that on, on the 6, June 6, that evening, there were, I counted at least 18 rounds of rapid fire gunfire that evening and from Papoose Lane. Yes.
Yeah, that, that, I had heard that as well, is that after the, on that Saturday,
Yes.
They were, they were up to some ruckus, and then things were kind of calm until the dogs returned. But for some reason, that just, no one saw them shooting at the road or heard anything coming towards their house, but, yeah.
So I guess, I mean, I'll start with you, Joseph, but then we'll go around quickly. I mean, at this point, do you have thoughts of something that we can do or should consider doing to try to help the situation any further? Or what's your thinking at the moment?
I don't really have too many ideas. I do think it's important to have a dialogue with the concerned neighbors and then ourselves, and also if things continue, possibly some sort of dialogue between the select board and the, you know, the perpetrators. But I'm not sure, I don't have any great ideas how to solve this.
Gwen, what's, given what you know about it at the moment, do you have thoughts on something we could or should be doing that we're not?
I don't know, I don't know even if a letter would, would help from the select board saying complaints have been made about firing arms, and, but that's probably just going to go on deaf ears, so I don't know. I have no idea.
I mean, I guess I'll ask about the firing situation. I mean, I'll freely admit I don't own a gun. I don't know what, I mean, is it illegal for someone to be shooting?
No, it's not illegal to discharge a
I mean, I, I'll say, I hear an awful lot of people in this cabinet who are running that, shooting guns a lot, so
I thought it was illegal so many yards from a house.
There is no language that says that.
Oh, okay. No? Oh, this is Vermont?
Yeah.
I could do a little research about that because of the gunfire being associated with the dogs, and, and in Vermont, it's a very liberal, lenient state. The only thing is with the AR-15, it was owned prior in 1986, and its grandfathered, if he owned, if somebody owns bought it after that, then it's illegal. And as far as protecting other people's houses, what they can do is register their property and post it as a safety zone. Every 200 feet, they put a sign on a tree, and this way neighbors couldn't shoot within 500 feet of the property line, but that's all that somebody can do.
I will just interject on the legality of the firearm. What you would be talking about would be a fully automatic weapon system, and I'm fairly sure that they do not have a fully automatic weapon system.
No, it's just semi-automatic, correct. You're right.
Yes, and so that would be, without further, you know, inspecting their weapons, I wouldn't assume that they're breaking any laws simply by owning
Right, right.
Bruce, or sorry, Joseph, I didn't mean to cut you off. I guess we were kind of moving around for what thoughts there were. Bruce, do you have thoughts of something that we should be doing or consider doing to try to help the situation at the moment?
Well, I'm sure that everybody had to say. And Dot and I know that when we, it wasn't quite the same situation as this, but we're talking about in terms of noise, not so much in physical violence, which is what you're pertaining to. And I'm trying to think of, I'm trying to sit down and think, what can make a change? And that's tough. So the only thing I'm thinking of this, you're going to love this joke, Joseph is a noise artist, but I can't come, because then maybe you have some kind of teeth in something that you could hold against them. But it came from the select board. We've been around, around about this Donald Elliott, and I told you about this last time. We went, and it has to be organic, it has to come from the community. So you've got to get a bunch of people that are sick and tired of all this, listening to gunshots in town, with, having people shooting any which way they want. And that's about the only thing that I could think of that you can get the grass in chief. Other than that, the safety issue, it's all legalities, and that, we're, I don't think we're in a position where we can actually make a law with respect to firearms, where there's already stuff on the books that are enforceable, but then you have to have the cooperation of the, for the state police, church department, and all that. So I don't know what to do, you know what I mean? It's a wild city over there, I guess, and the wild west is back, and I don't know how it can, how it resolves it, other than what I just said.
Shelby, how about you? Any thoughts on something we should consider doing or could be doing?
I mean, I don't know, I think it's, I don't envy the situation the neighbors are in, but I think unless they're going to call the state police when it occurs that could be classified as illegal or potentially illegal, there's really not much we can do. I mean, and, and, you know, and the dog, so I think the dog thing's being played out as much as it can be, and if there's any incidences of escalation with the firearms that result in legal intervention by the police, that's, you know, that would be, I think the only way that could be handled, and I mean, at the end of the day, we can't control if we have bad neighbors, and we can't, we can't make somebody leave just because we don't like them, we don't think they're good neighbors. And it's not saying that it's as simple as that, I think there are some places, obviously, where they're crossing lines, but people need to report to the people that have the authority to do something about it when those lines are crossed. Otherwise, it just is what it is.
Okay. I mean, I'll weigh in from my standpoint that, yeah, I, you know, other than continuing to have a dialogue with people as they have concerns and encouraging them to either report those concerns to law enforcement or reporting those concerns to law enforcement ourselves, and enforcing the rules that we do have, like Dot has been doing with the dog situation, and, you know, following all of the procedures that we have, I'm not sure that I see anything else at the moment that is obviously something that I think makes sense for us to do. Joseph, I'll circle back to you just for last thoughts, because then we do need to move on. Any, any last thoughts or any, I mean, I guess we all kind of hope that perhaps the show of force around the dog situation, maybe some of that helps keep the tenant a little bit more in line. But what are you, any, any last thoughts from you before we move on?
In fact, it does seem like things could possibly be improving. Like I said, I do think dialogue is important, and the one thing that maybe we could do if stuff flared up again, is maybe have some sort of communication directly between the select board and the tenants there. If it was just a, a letter, or, or, we can't really, you know, demand them to come to a select board meeting or anything like that, but I think that it's possible that a letter from the select board could have some sort of positive effect on this.
Maybe not, it could have negative effect as well.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's possible it could have a negative effect, but we could, you know, let's, let's, at the moment, things seem to be at least possibly moving in a better direction, or at least not moving in a worse direction. I guess I'd suggest we don't disrupt that, but, but yes, maybe, maybe that's something that we will, would make sense to do at a certain point.
Yeah, that, I'll just say, the one thing that scares me is that when we talk about calling the state police, especially in terms of the firearms use, we all know that the state police, even if they were to try to get here as fast as they could, they're, they're, you know, at least half an hour away, and, and so, you know, whether it's a stray bullet or whether it's them getting all riled up one night and actually trying to hurt one of their neighbors, the damage easily could be done well before the state police could, could ever respond. And that's, that's why I think that we need to at least think about it, because, you know, you, you can call the name of the state police at once, you know, it only takes, takes less than a second to end somebody's life with misuse or the purposeful use of a firearm, and that's what frightens me. And, and I will say that I've heard that exact sentiment from certain neighbors, and that's why I think it's important to talk about, just in the, the idea of representing the, you know, residents of the town.
Yep, that's a, that's a fair point.
If I may interject, just like something that the landlord should talk to his tenant about the shooting, I mean, the shootings on the properties, that, wouldn't that be the landlord, you know, the owner of the property that's, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, and I, yeah, and I, I think, I think some, like I say, and what I've, what I've heard third-hand leads me to believe that the landlord is possibly taking a more active role in that property situation, which hopefully, hopefully also helps. Sorry, yeah, what was that?
I've talked to him in the past, the landlord, he was always very nice to me, and I think Mr. Tanza Um, and I think Mr. Tansett got him to come up, yeah, yeah, so yeah, I mean, there's only so much we can do, you know, it gets better, like you said.
Amen.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, thanks, everybody, for that. Thank you, Dot, for joining and going through all of it and for all your hard work.
Okay, guys, I'm gonna sign off on a great meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Take care.
Okay, bye-bye.
Okay, next up is uh 6B Road Projects. So like I mentioned before, both Mark and Archie are here in the office. And I think the idea, as I recall it from when we talked about this last time, was basically just to to start to go through some of the road projects that maybe we had had on our agenda or now are on our agenda, see what our comfort level is as far as spending money on those or what we might possibly prioritize, what can wait, things like that. So I guess I'd maybe open it up first to Archie and Mark to maybe sort of start with the your priority list of of projects that are hanging out there.
Uh, Mark and I rode around, what was it, Monday night?
Yes.
And uh came up with a list of uh uh many, many of these projects we've uh discussed previously. Some are, some are new, some are old, some are blue, uh, but anyway, Mark can, Mark can go over the list. I guess the first one is uh paving on Hill Road. We we talked about this last year and uh kind of late in the season, we tabled it. Uh, we talked about it in March and then the COVID hit and nothing, nothing happened. Now we're moving into a new fiscal year, of course, in a few weeks. I guess my personal concern is um, you know, we're moving into the third year of no paving and you know, I I felt like a few years ago, we were really starting to get some momentum going uh toward our toward our paving in town, you know, we're, I think we're a lot better off than a lot of towns around um in that respect, but when I drive through the puddle of the end of Howard Osgood's uh uh driveway, I kind of think we're uh, I guess uh I'm thinking you're uh kind of heading the wrong way if we don't, if we don't get something going here. That's just my personal opinion. Hold up, Mark, yeah.
Yes, well, yeah, that was number one on the list to figure out whether to pursue paving for this fiscal year coming or to to wait.
I guess I'd, sorry to interrupt, but I, my suggestion would be that we we somewhat discuss each of these individually as we go through.
Okay.
Rather than going through the whole list and then fighting back, does that make sense? I mean, you guys have already prioritized things, so let's, let's talk about the highest priority things and make sure we we get some feedback on that. I guess let's uh, let's just give everybody a chance to weigh in specific, you know, so we've talked, obviously, like Archie said, we talked about paving Hill Road last year, it got too late. We, I think, as, I I think we were all prepared to put it out to bid in the spring, but then COVID hit and we've, we had concerns about what that might do for all kinds of reasons. Some of those concerns have probably relaxed, but possibly not all of those concerns. Um, and we're now about to be the beginning of July. My, I'll I'll weigh in first and say my personal view is I do think we should do the paving on Hill Road, but I think we should wait until next year to do it. Let's go around and let everybody else weigh in on it. Gwen, what's your feeling about uh the Hill Road paving situation?
Don't know.
Okay, and that's fine. I mean, it's, yeah, sorry, I mean, we don't have to have answers.
Is it too late to pave this year?
Yeah.
Presumably not. I mean, I guess it does remain to be seen whether we could get somebody who could, whether we could get a bid out, get an RFP out, get bids in, get somebody to agree to do this yet this year. But but we can certainly try. Um, there's, there's no reason we couldn't try.
Is that for the complete project, you know, reducing the hill and so forth?
Well, I'll say that the reduction of the hill is something that we've never discussed fully and that would be a whole nother topic of discussion, but I guess I would, I would suggest for the moment, let's take the temperature from everybody on how they feel about just entertaining doing the paving on Hill Road this calendar year still.
Did they get financials to say that we we've got the money with with the COVID situation?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any concern that I've heard that we don't have the money to be able to do it currently. Joseph, what's your feeling on paving Hill Road this year?
Well, um, there's really two main questions that I have. One, uh, about the financials, which I assume we're gonna get an update from Guy a little bit later on. Assuming that that all looks good, I'm also curious if the uh the price of um oil has still remained uh low and is affecting the the paving in our benefit. And uh if if that's the case, I would say that um it it might be in our best interest to get it paved this year because uh that that is a pretty big factor in the cost of uh paving and who knows what's gonna happen with that over the uh, of course, the next uh two, three months.
Okay.
I don't think it's gonna go any lower.
Okay. Um, Shelby, what's your feeling about the Hill Road paving situation?
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we have the money for it, I don't see why not. I think what we've started this experience so far with COVID is that we really don't know what, you know, what the economy is gonna look like, um, and what what's gonna happen moving forward, if we're gonna get hit again, but it seems like we're in an okay spot right now, and the summer might be the best time to get things done before flu season hits and there's potentially, you know, other impacts to the economy in the fall. So as long as the money's here now, um, I don't really see why we couldn't get it done. Um, and we also just don't know what next year's gonna look like if we get hit again and if they're actually in this next wave or something, um, are more economic repercussions for us, like not being able to collect taxes. So if the money's there, I would almost say go for it.
Okay. Bruce, what's your feeling?
I'm with Archie. Um, I wanted to do this last year or the year before, and I'm with Archie. Archie is right. We have, we made a huge amount of gains, a lot of thanks to him, on getting these, who, that, and Mark, and getting these roads to where we're pretty damn lucky to have them, the condition I have them. And I've got, that's, that's perfect, that's what I'm now. Um, I just um got an email from Sandry yesterday, of course, this might probably, we don't know how this affects um paving um oil, but um they're running a special right now, we're supposed to reset a knife for for uh for for heating well, and I don't know what the, what paving money's at, but I know what we did last year and the year before is we said, ah, because the prices were really, really high. I said, try. I said, we had an RFP, didn't we have an RFP, Dave?
No. We never got that part. We were in the process of, we were in the
That's early, Rick. I I'm in favor of doing it this year if we can. I think that the the iron top, and I think we should jump around, uh, as to what Joe, Joseph and Shelby are saying about the pricing. You know, the price is gonna change next year. I mean, this, this is pretty much lower than this. I doubt it. So that's a ton. Now, I read it, they get it all. But if it's what we think it is, I think we should take advantage of it, and we can find that out by putting out the RFP.
Okay. Um, I I'll just, I mean, and and that's fine. I mean, I'm, I'm, I I don't have a problem with us putting together an RFP and putting it out and seeing what we get. Uh, I will just mention just a logistical thing, which is, obviously, we're not voting on an RFP tonight, which means the earliest we're gonna vote on an RFP is gonna be July 1st. So so that means we we could vote on it July 1st, we can get it in, we can get it published for the 4th. We could have it due, I don't know, how long would we give people, Archie? I mean, we'd either have to have it ready, we'd either have to give them less than two weeks for it to be the 15th, and is that reasonable? So we'd have it, we'd, we'd open bids on the 15th of July.
They're just gonna bid it by the ton anyway.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, so I guess it sounds like consensus that let's at least get the RFP together and put it out and um hopefully we get responses that'll work for us and we can move forward with doing it.
Is that for Hill Road from the Osgood side? Remember there was another part of the Hill Road by Rogers, Jim Rogers, is that also part of it?
Yes, that's true. That little, hang on, the short, from Sunny Lane to Grassy Brook.
Okay, yeah, Sunny Lane driveway to Grassy Brook was one section and then from Howard Osgood's West River Lodge to the intersection of Grassy Brook Road by
So that's what you're shooting for this year?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
And at that point, we're all caught up. I don't know if anything else, I'm gonna search your market, Joe.
So
I'm worried about this point.
Um, so so is not to completely derail the rest of our discussion with this. I'm gonna suggest that um for the July 1st meeting, that we we sketch out, and I think some of this we had already and we can firm it up, that we have essentially an RFP for grinding, right, we had, we were gonna have one RFP for grinding, we were gonna have one RFP for paving, and then we were gonna have a third RFP, which we will definitely have to discuss for the removal of the material and the lowering of that hump, which we have not
Discussed.
discussed or agreed with necessarily, but
Would it be a good time for that discussion before the RFP? Is it, it seems like if the select board isn't in agreement, do you even do it? I mean, I don't think you've got
We can do that. I just, I don't wanna, we're also not, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna only get through part of the list, and that's fine.
Oh, okay.
And we can do that. So let's, let's have a discussion now about the the hump on Hill Road. So do you guys wanna refresh our memories on exactly what's being suggested, if it's still being suggested? If you guys still think that's a good idea?
Well, it uh, there is some uh safety concerns and I, I think lowering the hump would would improve uh sight distance from uh Cynthia's driveway and uh, what's the school bus exit? Mark and I looked at it back in March, was it? Yeah, I think it was March, and um I think we both kind of, after I set up my transit and we really uh looked at what what it would do, um I think, I think we both came away saying, it's not gonna do quite as much as I had hoped, but it definitely would be uh improvement. Whether it's worth it or not, I don't know, but
And refresh my memory on what we, what we were guessing the additional cost might be to do the to remove that. I don't, I didn't bring, I know that we had some
We had like a hundred and seventy-five feet of uh right, well, heights that we wanted to take out and uh as far as the number went to that, there was quite a few factors of cleaning up road edges and removing gravel. Was it like ten?
I feel like it was between ten and twenty, maybe, or something like that, I'm guessing at the moment. And again, it was, it was
Of course, I didn't agree with it.
Did you kind of tweak it on what you thought was
Um, which, you know, is another factor. If you, if you, in other words, if you, if you totally grind it down to nothing, you know, you gotta put base gravel back and and uh, you know, base blacktop as opposed to just milling the surface and putting, putting a layer of blacktop down.
So there'd be some paving, some additional paving costs also.
Yeah, you know, you gotta pay it anyway, but you don't have to put base down.
You don't have to do it quite the same. Um, let's, let's, let's just do a quick round on the, I'll say that I do not think it makes sense to do the removal of the material on that hump portion of Hill Road. Um, I've looked at it quite a bit. I don't actually think it necessarily helps the situation and I think there's a possibility it could make the situation worse from a speeding standpoint.
What I remember when I, when we went there, I know we're further up this way, is I thought it was a consensus that for the amount of money, it wasn't worth it.
Right, although
It's gonna make people speed even more.
Although I'll say it it has changed somewhat, both it's less expensive, we think, potentially to do it, and the severity of the change is different than what we had discussed a couple of years ago or whatever, but um Joseph, what's your, do you have a quick feeling on whether it's worth entertaining removing that material or not?
Uh, I I guess I would say I I don't really think it's worth any large amount of money. One, one thing that could um, that could possibly make it worthwhile is if uh we'll save some of that material, some of it could be used um up the road on the same project, I I think maybe I discussed that with Mark at one point. We talked about the possibility of needing to raise the road a little uh by um Howard's up there, and um if removing the material down by Cynthia's uh would would make it a little bit better there, at the same time as using that same material to uh make it better, make the road better up at uh Howard's, then it it could be a benefit, but um I don't really think that uh that just for the sake of removing it, it uh warrants spending so much money on it.
Uh, Shelby, what's your feeling, if you have one on this at the moment?
Yeah, I think I'm firmly in the, still in the, I don't really know that I think it would be that helpful and based on not being confident it would be helpful, I definitely don't think we should be spending money on it, so I'm happy to just kind of, if everyone else is on the same page at the end of this conversation, remove that from even considering putting it in the bid and just, and just do a bid for for regular paving and not that removal of the hump.
Okay. Bruce, uh, what's your feeling?
Uh, I've been back and forth on this issue for quite some time. I've been driving up that road for better part of forty-five years and um, and I was down there when we had the meeting down there and we, we looked at it and I've looked at it alone. My wife and I have talked about it, and this is what, this is what I'm at with it. I think spending twenty thousand dollars on it is not a good idea. Let's take that off the, saying that. I think, Archie, you said something like ten or eleven thousand dollars on the, I remember maybe something like that. I'm sorry if I'm wrong, um, that you thought you could do it for, maybe it could be reconsidered in that respect. I would consider it in 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 those numbers, about twenty thousand bucks. And I agree with David in one respect, we have to be sure, or really close to sure, that this isn't gonna enhance the speeding there. One, and two, we wanna be sure that it's gonna improve the situation. We're going to all this expense, even if it is ten grand, open the red. We're going to all this expense to um, to possibly be not doing anything. I said, I don't wanna do that. So I think, uh, Shelby's kind of right, we're gonna split the bid out, for paving, let's really get that going first, and then after that, we can discuss this. And if we're running forward, bargeing and if we're running forward, Barchie, you wanna come over and hear about it, we're gonna talk about it, and revisit it, you said a hundred and seventy-five feet, Mark, I don't know where that starts and where that stops, but that's a pretty good idea, I think. But I'd be open to considering it, but I'm not open to spending twenty thousand bucks.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna, and I guess people tell me if I'm misrepresenting anything, but I think our consensus is that we should not consider doing that, that we should focus on the paving, the RFPs for grinding and paving, and not worry about putting together and putting out an RFP for removing the material. Everyone say that's fair?
Like I was saying about the possibility of needing to raise the road, is that still something that we feel like we need to do? Does the road need to be raised up by Howard's?
I feel by Howard's, we should add some material to bring it up so that drainage goes off the road, by bringing it up. Now...
Where it puddles, right?
Where it puddles, right, at Howard's, between Howard's two driveways is the issue, and so if we were to build the road up six inches, it would make a huge difference through there.
What would be the approximate cost on doing that? Or, you know, you know how many loads it might take or might not take, or?
I'd rather hear that.
Just a, just a ballpark that you would be good?
Yeah, I think it's in the, around a thousand maybe.
Okay, yeah?
Could be.
You said a thousand, Archie?
Yeah.
Give or take.
Well, that's not that bad.
I guess the verdict would still be out there.
Hang on, Bruce.
It's easier just to do it with blacktop, I don't know. What did he, what did Brian say?
Well, we were gonna look at it as an entire grind from the intersection up to West River Lodge where the last paving started and stopped, and so I felt like once that was ground and reshaped and, and compacted, that then we could tell how much to rise up there. As far as cost goes, I don't know if gravel would be the right answer under the fresh paving, or if we could use grindings salvaged anywhere to build that up and then pave.
But in any event, is it fair to say that, that doing the removal of the, the removal of the other paved material merely for the purpose of being able to use that material elsewhere would not be a cost-effective thing to do? Right?
That's correct.
Right. I mean, we'd be paying more to do that than it would cost us by far to just get material to fill where we need to fill. Does that
That answers my question.
assuage your concerns, Joseph, or whatever? Yeah. Okay. Okay, so I think we're all on board as far as putting together RFPs for paving and grinding for Hill Road. What's next on your list?
Some of these run together for jobs, it's just a list of work that I would like to...
Needs to be done.
Yeah, a need-to-do list. And the next priority I feel throughout town is tree removal, you know, putting out to bid tree removal. Right around, you see many dead trees have come about since the last tree removal. So, you know, tree removal can be expensive. The ones that I have talked with, the Green Mountain Power, about trees that they'll remove that benefit us and them, and but, and then there's trees I can get on my own that aren't near power lines, but the trees I'm talking about, getting an okay to put out a bid on would, would be for some projects as well as traffic safety. You know, trees that are in danger of falling on our roads. So, so basically, I would just ask the select board for permission to pursue tree removal, and I believe that we could fit it into the budget as a contract service and not ask for extra money. I believe it's something that should be done regularly, and knowing what our budget is, I, I think there's room for certain amount of trees a year to be removed.
So a couple of years ago, was it a couple of years ago that
Yes.
we hired Carr to do that, and my recollection is, it's like maybe eight thousand dollars, something in that range, and they, whatever, a couple of days, three days, however much it was, that they basically went around and
Right.
did all of that.
I, I had flagged the trees that I wanted removed.
Do you, I mean, I know it's hard to guess, but is your guess that this is a similar type of project?
Yeah, I'd guess it's around the same number of trees. You know, some of them are worse off than others. There's a row of the trees I talked about at one of our last previous meetings that would like to get those removed for a better drainage project on Hill Road. That's something that, you know, that particular area is like a priority, I feel. If we could get, that's about twenty, twenty hemlog trees in one area. The rest of them are more or less like a dead standing or dying situation. But the, the other ones are, I mean, they're all a safety issue.
Yes.
So, yeah, a lot of the dead elms are, are shifting over the road.
Would that come under the Better Roads Grant? Would that project be part of the Better Roads Grant for the drainage?
It's not, and it's not only because it, the drainage doesn't go into a major stream
Oh, okay.
or river, you have to be within so many feet of a body of water for that. So it's kind of on its own.
Let's just, let's just do a quick whip around on this one. I mean, I'll say that I think, I think this is an important thing for us to do and continue to do, I think we've talked about it over the last several years, when we have these, when windstorms come through and other things come through, part of the reason I think that we are usually less impacted than other towns is because Mark and Archie and everybody have been good about proactively taking down dead trees, so we have less things that end up being a problem. You know, I, I'm comfortable with us putting out to bid to get, to get bids on something that's in a five to ten thousand dollar range for tree removal around town. Gwen, what's your feeling? Is that something that you're...
Safety is utmost?
Yeah. Joseph, what's your, what's your impression of that kind of project?
I agree, Seth, this is one of the more important things that we need to be focusing on.
Bruce, how about you?
This stuff yells into what we're doing with the paving and keeping everything up to snuff, huh? Yeah, it's good stuff. I do have a quick question for Mark. Mark, how's the ash situation in town?
Oh, you know, we're fortunate in Brookline, we do have a fair amount of ash, but nowhere near what other towns have. And, you know, in my daily travels, I, I see the ones that are apparently dying, and I haven't cut in or personally seen the the ash pour actively through Brookline, but I've heard that it's all around us. So, I think just as, you know, as I monitor the road, I'm constantly looking at the trees and you know, the foresters are in search of it on a daily basis around here, and the meetings that keep us informed on the ash. So I, some of the trees that I, I have marked are ash, and some of them appear to be perfectly healthy, but they say it's not gonna affect a hundred percent, but a, a great chance that the majority will eventually be caught with the, the ash pour.
Okay.
That answers your question.
Thank you.
Shelby, what's your feeling about this project?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think it sounds good. I don't think it's something that putting off, that putting it off would do us any good in the long run. I think that we have, puts a lot of that risk of a lot of property damage and or people being hurt, so I think it makes sense to keep working on it, and it sounds like something, would you, would we do it regularly as like a maintenance thing?
It should be done regularly, yes, just because it's a life cycle of trees growing, dying, damages and, and weather-related. So, and, and as far as the number goes, we can adjust that number to, you know, whatever number the board feels is the right number, but that's comparing to what Dave said, the last time we had a major overhaul was somewhere in the seven to eight thousand range. For around, that was, if I recall, it was near a hundred trees.
It's a lot of trees.
You know, and when I say trees, some of them were, you know, four inches to twenty-four inches.
You can come to my house next?
Yeah.
Okay, let's hit, let's hit one more item on your list, and then we'll continue it next time.
All right, and, I mean, this is the general maintenance thing, and we were holding back. I know that we, we plan each year to do a certain amount of culverts, but I have several culverts in need of replacement, and, which is, it's all part of the budget. So I'm just more or less looking for permission to pursue the replacement of several culverts that are failing for this summer with a, with a rented machine. We do have our option to use a rented machine with myself as the operator, or, or we could lump them as a, put them out to bid. But basically, we do need to address failed culverts and cleaning of other culverts that culvert ditches and runouts constantly filling with silt, so this all needs to be taken place, just need the, more or less the board's permission to pursue all of that.
Do you have, do you have the time to do this?
Oh, yeah.
For you to operate and do the...
I, I make the time with my budget for the roads to do this, yes.
Uh, just, one of the culverts, and I agree, I, I would rather see you do the work, because when we did put that culvert out to bid, we wound up with a bit of a dip in it and so forth, I don't know what happened there, but I think you know what's going on more. And the other question was, are you thinking about replacing that culvert by Jim Rogers there, by Nice Room Property, before we pave Hill Road? Remember there was that one culvert there that was seen to be, uh...
By Sunny Lane, me?
By Nice Room's, going up Sunny Lane?
A real long culvert?
Yeah, yeah, it goes across the road.
Yeah, I think we looked at that one and decided that if that's a paved area,
Yeah, yeah, that, okay.
pursue that. I do have a list, I didn't bring it with me, but, yeah, if that needs replaced.
Yeah, before we paved.
Priorities land.
Let's, let's just quickly go, I mean, I, I'm in agreement that this is also something that's important, and that we should, you know, we have budgeted and we're in, things, things look good at the moment, we should move forward with doing them and not skip a summer of culvert.
And maintenance.
Gwen's in agreement. Joseph, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I, I believe that it's certainly a necessary task.
Yep. Bruce, how do you feel?
Yes, I agree with everybody, yes.
Okay. Shelby?
Same.
Okay. All right.
So, so Mark has some prices, I don't know if you wanna hear for the rentals, the...
Sure, yeah, let's talk about that.
Well, I, I followed around to a few different companies. Some of them didn't have the machine size we were looking for, so I wrote down the ones that were compatible. Some of these excavators are on tracks, a traditional excavator, and then the one is the wheel excavator that we've all talked about for so long. Okay, I, I've got price ranges from thirty-seven fifty a month to six thousand dollars a month. I mean, I can break them all down, but that's the price range here. The two thousand dollar difference monthly. Weekly goes from twelve fifty a week rental to twenty-five hundred a week rental.
What's your guess as far as if you, if you do the culverts that you're sort of thinking you need to do, how, I mean, how long would we need to rent them?
Well, I, with, if you don't run into ledge or any major unexpected, you should be able to do a culvert a day, pretty easy, you know, removal and do that back in the new culvert, so so I would say in a week's time, I could probably do six. Six culverts. You know, we have several, and I'm feeling like one week would be probably close, but it may take a little bit more.
But two weeks?
Presumably, do these have, yeah, I mean, you maybe, you, you planned for the idea that it could be two weeks?
Yeah, well...
Are there other things that you potentially could do with this equipment?
Oh, for sure, yeah, once the machine, once the machine is there on the job site, you're concentrating on the culvert, but then you need to make sure the drainage is gonna
Yep, yep.
on each end. And so, from culvert to culvert, there's always cleaning, you know, ditch material removal to... So there's, there's lots of extra, the thing wouldn't sit around if...
Is there a big difference from the two weeks to the one month? I, I guess what I'm getting at is that when you had it for a month, at one time, you accomplished a great deal.
Right.
We saved a lot of money, and it, it was worth its weight in gold.
Right, yes, you know, six thousand dollars a, a week for the, for the ideal machine.
For the month.
For the month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In two weeks.
It's, that's higher than the rest, but the other ones are on track, so we'd have to like trailer it from site to site, whereas the one on wheels, you can drive.
Yep.
So you're, you're paying a little bit more, but you're, you're getting more.
You'll get more accomplished.
Right. As far as, you know, I think in one solid month, I could accomplish a, a major amount of even the, the other list of work that I had saved on...
Like cleaning those ditches and stuff?
I guess the other thing I'd ask, and so this is, am, am I correct that that wheeled excavator is also the kind of machine that we've talked about? And, you know, getting back to Joseph and you guys thinking at some point had been, maybe it would make sense to get this for a purpose, and maybe this is that purpose, so that we have some experience with it and can see all of the things and document all the things it can do, so we're, we're more educated about it.
More informed.
Informed about it.
We'd be more tasking, yeah. And, yeah, I mean, there's, there would be times that I, I wouldn't be available on certain days because of my other job opportunities that I attend to, but, but even still, knowing the machine is here and ready, and when I came to town and worked, I still believe that I would give the town a lot of benefit for what it's capable of. I did inquire on, and added mower just for, you know, future reference, and, and for rental, they, they had a thousand dollars for a full month of, on top of the six for a mower. So if you were mowing for a whole month, it would be like seven thousand dollars. But again, we don't, we would have no use for mowing for four weeks in a row. More or less a one week would be... More or less a one week would be all the.
Have you, have you, I've noticed when we were driving around, I noticed some of that wild parsnip.
Yeah.
I haven't noticed any around here, but I noticed it going up like Route 30. I went, oh no, there's some of that stuff.
The knot we, in two weeks' time, grew was five feet.
And the other, the wild, yeah.
And the other stuff is right behind it.
I noticed it, it was starting.
You know, and this year, we've rented the over-the-rail mowers, so we're all set for mowing. And July 6th to July 10th, we'll try to knock down all that invasive to beat the reseeding of the mature plant.
Let's just do a quick, and we'll end with this. But so on the idea of potentially getting the wheeled excavator for a month in order to do the culvert stuff as well as other things, I think it makes sense to do that. Gwen, what's your feeling?
Well, I think it makes sense that way. You hit, Mark has less pressure, knowing that it's here for any time he needs it. And maybe he's going to be able to get more done because he knows he doesn't have to rush this or rush that to get over here. So I think it's a good idea.
Joseph, what's your thinking?
I think that we've discussed this pretty in depth and I don't think we should be spending money like crazy right now, but I think this is actually something that would save us money. So I think that it's a good idea to go with it.
Bruce, how do you feel?
I think that it's a good opportunity and knowing, especially knowing how Mark works. And I think it would be really a great advantage for him to be able to, you know, get things done. And I think of right now, other than the culvert, so yeah, I'm totally in favor of it.
Okay. Shelby, how about you?
Yeah, same. I think it falls in the same vein as everything else we talked about that we've been okay with tonight. I think it needs to happen and I think that we could get a lot out of that hunt with the machine and.
And you're all invested already.
Okay, cool. Awesome. Okay, any last thoughts? I guess I'd, so.
I mean, there are other options. We could do it two week, but we're only a thousand dollars less. If we do it two week, then.
Versus four.
Yeah, see, that's where I think to my point that, yeah, I think at that point, I trust that you're going to be able to find other things.
Even if it's out a couple of days, you'd still be.
Exactly.
Yeah, if you were to hire somebody, you're gonna pay way more than that six.
Maybe Bruce can cut some grass or something, you know.
Okay, so let's, let's leave, let's wrap that up for road projects at the moment. But I guess I would say let's, after we talk about the RFPs and stuff at the next meeting, let's hit the rest of your list.
Okay.
If that works for you guys.
Sure.
Cool. All right. Any last thoughts before I cut you off?
Anything on there that?
I think a lot of the things on the list could actually be done in a month, you know.
Well, right, exactly. That's, right.
A lot of it's just little.
Right, so, yeah, that's, that's ideal. Yeah. Okay, cool. All right. Thank you both very, very much for that. Thanks for talking. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I do, right. Yeah.
All right, let's move along to old business. And first up is the seven eight tax collection update. Mr. Tanza, do you want to just give us?
Okay, a quick, a quick review. We started at over forty thousand dollars about two weeks ago. We're down to seventeen five. And, you know, we're moving in the right direction. As I said earlier, I think the town financially is in fairly good shape because we're about where we normally would be if we didn't have the virus. The few bigger amounts due are people that are contacting again. And I think they'll come through. And then we have the standard, regular people who, for whatever reason, are always late, needs four or five warnings and so forth. But I think we're in good shape. The state hasn't set the tax rate for next year yet. We're still waiting to hear from the state. So that's another issue, but I think we're okay. And I think getting the work done for the town is important because we have a budget of thirty-nine thousand dollars to do that. And that would certainly be advantageous. And now is the time to get it done where you have weather and everything in your favor. So I, speaking as assistant treasurer, I think we're in good shape. Samara's going to review some things with Sarah in the next couple of days. And I think she may have a report for you for the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions from any of the board members specifically about the tax collection situation for now?
No.
Nope.
Nope, okay.
No.
Thanks, guys. All right, moving on to Susan's little peanuts update. Bruce?
First thing, Mark, I need your assistance. You know how we talked about changing the boards in the rooms last year?
Yeah.
I got an email from Jess. I mean, that they wanted to, they wanted to do what you were talking about last year. So I need to coordinate that with you, okay?
Okay.
It's not a Russian emergency, but as much as you're doing nothing, right?
Yeah, you can call me anytime, myself over there. And also need to talk about getting the supplies to be able to do that.
Yeah, I'm gonna probably get the bowls ready, but you know, when you, when you in town, if we can talk face to face about it, rather than take up a lot of time with everybody else.
I'll be in town tomorrow.
Okay, in the morning?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm going over there to talk to somebody else about something else. So when, when do you want to be there? Or you want to call me in the morning?
Sure, yeah, I'll call you first tomorrow.
Yeah, make it to like after nine. I'll get killed.
Why, half the day's gone.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay?
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, now, now move on. We're over there. You and I, Dave, still have to work out this thing about the wood, the wood just, and nobody said anything, so. But you would edit out straight, believe it or not, but I didn't, you know, still have to edit it out. And so I'm not in a rush to do much of anything.
Yeah, we'll figure it out when we, when we need to.
What's that, Dave?
Yeah, we can figure it out whenever.
Yeah, okay. Now, a week ago Saturday, I got a phone call from Norm Holden. And he said he's ready to go. And I said, oh, great, you guys, so I come over, take a couple of windows out and get started on. All right, so I run to the building. He took the, took the windows out. The top one is fixed. The bottom one is moving. Took them out. Now it's a Saturday. I got a phone call Monday. Oh, there's too much work on the inside of these windows. I'm gonna need another hundred dollars a window.
I thought that was.
I said, wait a minute, you agreed to paint the windows. I looked at the bid and we felt it filled the back of earth. And I said, well, maybe okay. And then I got off the phone and said, not so fast. So I called him up and we had a meeting. I went over and looked at the windows. And he was telling me how he's not making any money on the windows. And it was harder than he thought. There's more time to it than he thought. But he was still doing a really good job on them. And I wasn't happy. I showed him the bid, read him the bid.
Yeah.
And I wasn't happy about it. I basically, I backtracked the original agreement. So I told him, I said, go ahead and do it for another thousand bucks, for another thousand bucks. I said, no, 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 no. Not without talking to you all. We ain't doing that. So anyway, we had a nice conversation. It's not, it wasn't as negative as I'm making out to be, really. We had a very nice conversation about it. And I went through this. And so I was gonna talk to you folks. And if anybody wants to come, we'd have to make a bunch of money. Anybody wanting to go and see the windows, he's taken out. We could do that. Or we could just agree on what to do with this thing. But he knows we've got a number of blind because he signed an agreement. And I went and looked at that bid and that's what it says. Do the windows for five fifty-five hundred bucks.
Right, and that's, and I'll just remind, we'll remind him and everyone that is in large part why we awarded him the bid because of what he said he would do him for, so.
You know, also, Dave, he had two opportunities to look at those windows, inside and out. He chose to take the windows out. Um, I, after the whole discussion, Gwen, Guy and I talked about it in town office days after. And I think Gwen and Guy were more inclined to forgive him. He made a mistake and all this other stuff. And maybe I am too. All right, here, everybody else has to say, I'm really upset about it because, hell, you know what I'm not. All I'm doing is throwing, all I'm doing is BS going on. He signed a bid. He said he was gonna fix the windows for a certain price, but.
Right, so let's just, for the avoid, yeah, all right, let's just, we'll quickly.
Wait a minute, just a moment. Dave, we want the windows done right one and two. And he said he would anyway, even if we didn't go along with this, what he wants. He says it. But two, we have to keep in mind also that the outside of those windows are red paint. I don't believe the insides are. But he did, supposed to do two things we have to consider. And he did choose, choose, excuse me, to take the windows out. No one told us to do it because he wanted to do it that way. So now he's finding more work as a result of it. And he's telling us, we have to do it anyway. And the paint on the inside, I looked at it myself, guys, and the paint on the inside, yes, it's accessible. It's painted over many, many times over the years. So we have to scrape them down another hour or two or. And now he's looking on, on the price. So and you have to take the latch off and this and that and so on. But before I'm done, I just want to say two things. First, one, get off the windows done. We know that. But two, it was a marvelous opportunity having those windows out to see that freaking wood. That wood is gorgeous. According to Old Dominique, it's twenty years old.
Okay.
I don't know if that's accurate.
Bruce, let's wrap this up. Sorry, let's, sorry, I'm sorry, Bruce.
That's my spiel. I want to hear what Dave's to say about what they think we should do and then we'll go from there.
Okay, so let's, yeah, let's give everybody a chance. So I'm gonna start by myself and saying, we put it out to bid. He looked at all the windows. He gave us a bid for a certain price. I expect him to do the work for that price. I'm not, I'm not interested in considering paying him anything other than the price that he said he would do the work for, because we might want to decide to give it the work to somebody else instead. So that's my opinion. Gwen, what's your opinion of the situation?
A bid is a bid.
Joseph, what's, Joseph, a bid is a bid, she said. That, you know, he bid a price, so that's the price that he's got to live with. Joseph, what's your feeling?
Yeah, I agree. This is, he, he signed a contract with us and this is not a bid for some homework. This is a participative bid. And I think that he needs to honor that just as much as, as we do.
Yeah. Well said. Shelby, what's your view?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, especially because I, I think it's, I mean, I, as somebody who wasn't as for the windows, as other, I really, I think, I think that the price we got the bid for was one that we were all comfortable with. And there's a reason that we accepted that bid and we should stick by it.
Yeah. Okay, Bruce, is that?
Okay, I'm marching, right? There's no telling until we have to stick to the bid. Jimmy, I just hope he does a good job because we know that happens when there's a disciplined person doing the work. But it was his error. So who knows? He's accepted it. He knows that he didn't put in the bid. Well, he says this. Well, usually that means we're up there a bit for painting. It means exterior. Said, Norm, look at the bid. The bid says do the windows, not inside or outside. He said, well, maybe, maybe I'll go with that one. Hey, man, you had two opportunities to look at the building. You heard it up to him. I mean, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't stay there. He wanted to do it. He just went ahead and do your price. But remember, the price was first five thousand dollars and then he had to check it up to fifty-five hundred.
Bruce, I hate to interject here, but I don't think that we need to continue to hash it out. I know that Norm is a professional guy and after you tell him what we've discussed here, I know he'll do an excellent job on the work. So I don't think there's any reason to keep going back and forth about what he's saying.
I hope so. That's all I can say. And we are we watching, but the bottom line is we pay him the works done. So we had, I grabbed, what do I call first? He doesn't do a good job. And so he promised me he would. I just don't want to see any corners. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go freaking nuts.
Right. Okay, anything else on the building, Bruce? We gotta move on.
No, let me see. Let me think for a second. No, I think the only thing I'm gonna fill in is as this is all getting done, that at some point, I might get Dave Sussco in to fix those windows and make sure they operate correctly. I'm talking about the rates and the looks to make sure they're a hundred percent so that, so that the, so our renters or resies can use the windows properly and we don't have issues down the road. So it's out now. And when they're going back in, because you could turn it back over, over those stops. And I want to make sure that everything's working fine before we throw it something in there.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to summary update. Mr. Tanza, what's going on?
Another election. We have a reelection for the school budget, for the grab school portion of the budget, which failed by three votes last week. So that'll be on June 30th, the same, same, same scenario. We'll do it here. We'll have to wear a face mask and hand sanitize. And then at the end of the evening, we will bring them over to Leland and Gray where we will co-mingle them and count them. Only in this vote, there'll only be four towns rather than five towns. Wyndham isn't part of this. So hopefully, we'll get it passed and we'll move right along. Other than that, things are running good. Gwen's doing the, the files, you know, the books, you know, copying those into a Nemrec and everything seems to be okay.
I am able to be here that night to.
I just invite two people, just so that it's just not going in I, because.
Yep. Shelby, are you able to be here again also?
What's an idea?
June 30th, Tuesday, June 30th.
A half hour at the very most.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why not. That should be fine.
Okay, all right. So we'll both be here and so.
Thank you.
It'll be a lot easier. We only have one page.
Yeah, one question, yes.
Let's, okay, moving on to highways and roads. Mr. Bills?
Yeah, basically, since I've seen, seen you guys last, I'm still working on the final grading of the, you know, things are ready now and I'm still just scraping and working with the, flooring, getting road flooring. So that's basically all since I've talked to you last. Everything else is, you know, the grass is growing and we'll be mowing in another three weeks. So I know it's gonna be up there, but our schedule is second week of July. So that's all I have for you tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, moving on to communications. The only email that I thought was particularly of note for us that Guy had forwarded along the tax rate notice dates for fiscal year '21. Just for us all to be aware of the fact that obviously, because of delays or extensions for some things, we're ultimately gonna need to push back due dates for the first, well, the due date for the first.
We're still shooting for August 15th as the, as the date for the first quarter.
Okay, so even though people have, even though they're not gonna get homestead stuff.
Right, exactly. You know, because the federal has been pushed up to July 15th. So the tax department, Vermont Tax Department, is gonna be somewhat a little behind. But we've done that before where we made adjusted tax bills in the next quarter. So I, I think right now, I'm optimistic. I think we'll have an August 15th tax notice.
Okay, that would be great. And then regular mail, only two things. There's a postcard about solar savings from Green Lantern Solar. And then we've also received, which I will be signing, the renewal of our contract with the Wyndham County Humane Society. the renewal of our contract with the Wyndham County Humane Society, who you'll remember we designated as our pound keeper and as the situation with the papoose clean dogs shows how incredibly valuable it is for us to have them as a partner in this whole situation. So the, our annual contract with them expires June 30th and this is just a renewal contract. So I'll be signing that so we can send that back to them. That's the only other regular mail. Then we're moving on to the pay orders. So Guy sent out, Guy emailed just before the meeting, a scan of the payroll warrant which I signed last week. Sarah didn't, didn't send it out with the other one, so I asked Guy to scan it and send it out. So I guess before we do that, we'll do our same little thing. Gwen, have you reviewed the payroll warrant and do you have any questions about it? Okay. Joseph, have you reviewed the payroll warrant and do you have any questions about it?
I have, I do not.
Okay. Shelby, have you reviewed the payroll warrant and do you have any questions about it?
Yeah, I have no questions.
Cool. Bruce, have you reviewed the payroll warrant and do you have any questions about it?
When did it get sent out?
It just got sent out, it got sent out.
Quarter after six.
Quarter after six by Guy.
I can't see it. So I'll, I'll just have to abstain. As far as the pay orders go, I saw that and I won't go into that. It wasn't that much on the school and all this stuff, Thomas Boom and.
Yeah, I'll say, I'll say the payroll warrant is.
See the payroll.
Okay, yeah, it just got sent out right before the meeting. Then I would suggest that you just abstain from it when we do it. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll warrant 2020-46 dated June 10th, 2020 in the amount of one thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Is there a second?
Hello?
He's not gonna second it.
I'll second.
Seconded by Shelby. Any discussion here none? All those in favor of approving payroll warrant 2020-46 dated June 10th, 2020 in the amount of one thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty-three cents, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Bruce abstains. All right, that is approved. Now we'll move on to the payroll, the accounts payable warrant. I'll do the same thing, go around. Gwen, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant and do you have any questions?
Yes, I reviewed. No questions.
Joseph, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant and do you have any questions?
Yes, I have. No, I do not.
Shelby, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant and do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, and I just have a quick question. Does anyone use the ball field? I mean, I'm generally.
That is a good question. I'm not sure.
What was the question?
Does anybody use the ball field?
Yes, right. Do people, does everybody use?
Once in a, once in a great while there's a makeup game, but not as a rule this year, I think probably more, less used because of the virus situation. But during the summer, I've seen it used quite a bit last year.
And it's like, just like random people, not, I mean, it's not like, we don't have, there's no school or league or team or anyone locally that like using it for something specific.
As a matter of fact, Peter Meyer last weekend used a weed. Yeah, brush off, opened it up wide, so it looks really good.
Okay, Bruce, Bruce, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant and do you have any questions?
Yes, I did. No, I don't.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrant 2020-51 dated June 17th, 2020 in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Gwen. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant 2020-51 dated June 17th, 2020 in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-two cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that's pay, both pay warrants are approved, which just brings us down to setting the agenda for the next meeting, which will actually be July 1st. There's a typo in my agenda. It's July 1st, not June 17th. I have on there that we'll review and hopefully approve paving and grinding RFPs. We'll continue the discussion of road projects. Gwen, do you have other suggestions for agenda items?
I have none.
Joseph, do you have other suggestions for agenda items?
No.
Shelby, any additional suggestions for agenda items?
Um, yeah, I'd like to put discussing the survey on. I did get a handful of responses, like six, six, seven, I think. And my thought was that we knew it was gonna be on the agenda for the next meeting. I would send out a reminder for anyone who was thinking about responding and indicate that we'd be discussing it at the meeting if anyone wanted to call in.
Okay, so yeah, we'll put that on. That's a good idea. Bruce, any suggestions for agenda items?
So we're gonna do the RFP for Hill Road.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yes.
Right? And we're gonna, are we gonna table the discussion about the cutting down the knob there, you know, shit here?
I think we've.
Or we're gonna talk about that later?
No, we've, we've, we discussed, we discussed it and have uniformly decided that we're not going to discuss that further at now. That we're just gonna move forward with paving and RF, paving, grinding RFPs for Hill Road without the removal of the material part.
Okay, okay.
Right.
How does Archie feel about it?
He's walked out of the room, but I don't think he had any issue with that. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, then I'd make a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second?
All right, put a SLP on there to.
Yeah, I, I was going to. Sorry, is there a second on adjourning?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Uh, beat you to it.
Well, yeah, 'cause he didn't let her speak. I'll give it to Bruce, I guess.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at eight oh eight.